Upon request from member states, end of quote. In this regard, I should like to draw the attention of delegations to document A/ES-11/119, which contains a letter dated seventeen February two thousand twenty-five from the representative of Poland and Ukraine to the United Nations, addressed to the President of General Assembly, requesting the resumption of the eleventh Emergency Special Session. I intend to conduct the proceedings of this meeting in accordance with the rule of procedure of the Assembly and the past practices on its emergency special sessions. In accordance with Rule sixty-three of the Rules of Procedure of the Assembly, the President and Vice President of the seventy-nine session shall serve in the same capacity at the resumed eleventh Emergency Special Session. May I take it that is the wish of the Assembly to decide that the credentials committee of the seventy-nine session should serve for the resumed eleventh Emergents Special Session? It is so decided. In keeping with established practice, I should now like to invite the attention of the Assembly to document A/ES-11/116 concerning member states that are in arrears in the payment of their financial contribution to the United Nations within the terms of Article nineteen of the Charter. In addition, I would like to inform members that since the issuance of document A/ES-11/116, Cabo Verde and Granada have made payments necessary to reduce their arrears below the amount specified in Article nineteen of the Charter. This information will be reflected in document A/ES-11/116/Addendum I to be issued. May I take it that the Assembly duly takes note of the information contained in these documents? It is so decided. In this connection, may I further take it that it is the wish of the Assembly to follow the provision of Resolution seventy-nine slash three of nine October two thousand twenty-four, by which Santo May Prince and Principal is permitted to vote in the Assembly until the end of its seventy-nine session and to also allow these member state to vote at the resumed eleventh Emergency Special Session? It is so decided. The Assembly will now resume its consideration of Agenda Item Five, entitled "Letter dated twenty-eight February two thousand fourteen from the Permanent Representative of Ukraine to the United Nations, addressed to the President of the Security Council, In this connection, the Assembly has before its two draft resolutions contained in documents A/ES-11/L-10 and L-11 and draft amendments to draft resolution contained in documents A/ES-11/L-12, comma, L-13, comma, L-14, and L-15. Excellencies, colleagues, today marks a grim milestone. Three years have now passed since the Russian Federation launched its full-scale invasion of Ukraine, an act of aggression that has led to untold bloodshed and destruction. And yet, the tragedy continues. According to the Office of High Commissioner for Human Rights, civilian casualties rose by thirty percent last year compared to the year before. More life shattered, more futures lost. Meanwhile, the humanitarian crisis in Ukraine remains dire. The two thousand twenty-five Humanitarian Needs and Response Plan, launched last month, estimate that twelve point seven million people, roughly thirty-six percent of the country's population, will require assistance this year. We cannot afford another year of this unjust war. The General Assembly has been clear and unwavering. It has adopted six resolutions demanding the immediate, complete, and unconditional withdrawal of Russian forces from Ukraine territory and to an end to attacks on civilians and civilian infrastructure. These resolutions have consistently reaffirmed the need for a peaceful solution, one rooted in the Charter of the United Nations and the principles of sovereign equality and territorial integrity. At a time when the United Nations is under intense scrutiny and when the Security Council is deadlock on matters of key importance for our collective security, the General Assembly has demonstrated its ability and its responsibility to act. Colleagues, Russian aggression against Ukraine is a grave violation of the United Nations Charter. As the eighteenth anniversary of the signing of the Charter approaches, we must reaffirm that lasting and meaningful peace will never be achieved through force. It will come through silencing the guns, turning to dialogue and diplomacy, and upholding the principles enshrined in the Charter. We must be prepared to promote inclusive dialogue and actively work towards a just and sustainable peace, one firmly anchored in international law, General Assembly resolutions, and above all, the will and the rights of Ukrainian and its people. This Assembly must stand firm in its resolve to find a way forward towards peace. Let's prove through actions and not words that a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace is within our reach. Thank you. I now give the floor to Her Excellency Mariana Betza, Deputy Minister for Foreign Affairs of Ukraine, to introduce draft resolution A/ES-11/L-10.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dear ladies and gentlemen, distinguished colleagues, your excellences. This is a moment of truth, a historic moment. A historic moment not only for Ukraine, a historic moment not only for Europe, a historic moment for the entire democratic world. And the way we answer to the Russian aggression today, the way we answer to Russian atrocities and crimes, the way we answer to the aggression as a tool of statescraft will define not only the future of Ukraine, will define not only the future of Europe, it will define our common future, the future of an entire democratic world and the future of the UN. Are we ready to abide by the UN Charter? Are we ready to protect sovereignty and territorial integrity of states? Are we ready to abide by the principle of inviolability of borders and non-use of force? Mr. President, today marks three years from the Fuske invasion by the Russian Federation. Three years of Ukraine's resistance, three years of Ukraine's preservation, three years of Ukraine's fight and heroism. But let me recall that the war started eleven years ago in two thousand fourteen. Eleven years ago, Ukraine faced one of the most dramatic and challenging periods in its modern history. While resisting the attempt to impose dictatorship, Ukrainians demonstrated dignity and defended their choice for the democratic future in the family of European countries. While the sovereign choice of Ukrainians posed no real threat to Russia, the Kremlin perceived it as a threat to the imperial and non-colonial ambitions. In Kremlin's world, Ukraine was relegated to the role of a Russian satellite within its sphere of influence. For Russia, a military solution to this imagined threat was always an option. Disinformation, economic warfare, subversive activities, all of these laid the groundwork for the subsequent Russian aggression against Ukraine. And immediately after the victory of the Revolution of Dignity in Ukraine, Russia started its occupation of Autonomous Republic of Crimea and some parts of Donetsk and Lugansk regions. Weak international response to Russia's attacks on Crimea, Donetsk, and Luhansk back then led to a full-scale military invasion of my country from the north, east, and south three years ago. Russia has plunged entire world into yet another war, a war totally unprovoked, unjustified, and unlawful, driven solely by morbid geopolitical delusions of the past and yet the bloodiest war in Europe after the Second World War. And all of us became the targets, Ukraine and Ukrainians, because Russia denies our every right to exist. The world has become a target because Russian missiles do not only strike Ukraine, they also shatter the global security architecture, which, three years into this invasion, remains riddled with gaping holes, much like the country's countless residential buildings destroyed across Ukraine. The United Nations is under attack because Russia attacked every foundation of the UN Charter, blatantly violated the UN Charter and the core principles enshrined in it. Russia wants to replace the world based on international law to the world based on the rule of force. And finally, Russia attacked humanity. Humanity itself is under attack, an unsurprising reality, given that Russia has made medieval cruelty a hallmark of its military strategy against a peaceful neighbor and blackmails everyone with its nuclear weapons. Excellencies, Russia believed Ukraine would surrender. Russia believed he would fall in three days. Russia believed our government would flee. However, Russia miscalculated gravely. Eleven years, Ukraine stands firmly and resists. The myth of Russia's military invincibility has been shattered. What was once seen as an unstoppable force has been met with resilience, courage, and determination, reinforced by the unwavering support of the free world. Your solidarity has demonstrated that unity and principles of the UN Charter are stronger than aggression and lawlessness. I want to reiterate our profound gratitude to over one hundred forty member states that had stood with us, including those who have supported relevant resolutions in this hall, to those who provided military aid to Ukraine, to those who provided humanitarian assistance to Ukraine, to those who received our temporary displaced persons, to those who help and continue to help bring our deported children back home, our prisoners of war bring home, and our illegally detained civilians to bring them home, to those who have contributed to the implementation of our grain-from-Ukraine initiative, a practical effort to mitigate global food security threats stemming from this war. This war has never been about Ukraine only. It is about a fundamental right of any nation to exist, to choose its own path and to live free from aggression. If aggression is justified and a victim is blamed for its resilience and a will to survive, then no country is safe. Today, Ukraine fights not only for its own independence, but for a world of nations that are not divided into predators and prey, where no zones of conflict or influenceri and gray zones exist. We are fighting for a world which cannot be divided by any another Molotov-Ribbentrop Pact. We stand up for the world where a future of a nation cannot be determined by another Yalta Conference. Mr. President, three years of Russia's full-scale invasion against Ukraine have made it clear that we are dealing with a protected, high-intensity war with extreme levels of casualties and spillover effect rippled across different areas and continents. Let me stress once again that the UN were formed after the Second World War to prevent future wars and maintain international peace and security. Against the backdrop of ongoing and upcoming peace efforts, the General Assembly should take a pivotal role in determining the basis for the just and last peace in Ukraine and in Europe, as well as its standing for sovereignty of all states. A clear message that the vision of comprehensive, just, and lasting peace, consistent with the UN Charter that we endorsed in this hall two years ago, remains valid and must be implemented without delay already this year. However, reducing the Assembly's position to merely stating that this desire is not enough. We need to reconfirm that the aggression should be condemned and discredited, not rewarded. Our position must include substantive elements and ensure that any future peace initiatives aligns with the principles of the UN Charter. This is the rationale behind the draft resolution that I have the honor to introduce today on behalf of the broad group of co-sponsors. My delegation moves that, after hearing the introduction of all the L documents, the Assembly immediately proceed to the consideration of our draft resolution on the understanding that the debate would resume immediately after action on the draft resolution and that the eleventh Emergency Session would be only temporarily adjourned after the conclusion of the debate. We need clear guidance, not just silence, weapons temporality, not just ceasefire, but to achieve a solution which is just, comprehensive, and sustainable, a solution that guarantees that there will be no repetition what happened three years ago on February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, neither in Ukraine nor elsewhere. For us, for Ukraine, the past is clear. The only way, as our President Odamizelensky has stated, to ensure comprehensive, just, and lasting peace is to reaffirm our commitment to the UN Charter and to agree that the principles enshrined in it, the principle of sovereignty and the principle of territorial integrity of states within its internationally recognized borders, might serve as the foundation. By adopting the draft, the General Assembly will also address the global impact of war and outline the areas where this impact has been particularly detrimental and where the engagement of all responsible nations would be crucial. In particular, there are global food security, energy security, the global economy, nuclear security and safety, and the environment, justice, and accountability. As we mark three years of this devastating Russia's full invasion against Ukraine, we call on all nations to stand firm and to take the side, the side of the Charter, the side of the humanity, and the side of just and lasting peace. Peace through strength, as the aggressor would never stop while seeing weakness. Excellencies, Ukraine's commitment to the UN Charter's principle traces back to the first day of our organization. Now, it may seem to be symbolic that it was a representative of Ukraine who chaired eighty years ago the committee responsible for drafting the preamble, purposes, and principles of the future Charter at the UN Conference on International Organization in San Francisco in nineteen forty-five. Unfortunately, we haven't yet reached the point where principles enshrined in the UN Charter are respected by all member states and that Article fifty-one of the Charter is just a matter of history. Definitely not, as my country has been compelled to exercise its inherent right to self-defense under the above-mentioned Article fifty-one following unprovoked, mean, brutal, genocidal war. While persisting in defending our country until the threat is over, we strive for peace. Peace that will give the world another chance to live according to the rules, when all nations, regardless of the size of geography, will equally enjoy their sovereign rights rather than depend upon the merciful more powerful. This is the spirit that should guide us during the vote on the draft resolution, advancing a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine. I am confirmed that it will be a vote for peace for the UN Charter and for each member state. I urge you to vote in favor of Ukraine's draft resolution. Thank you so much.
I thank the Deputy Minister for Foreign Affairs of Ukraine. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United States to introduce draft resolution A/ES-11/L-11.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, excellencies, colleagues. Today marks three years since the escalation of the Russia-Ukraine war. We have all been concerned about the suffering in Ukraine and the war's effects on the rest of the world. Since the start of the war eleven years ago, the United Nations has repeatedly condemned Russia's blatant violations of the UN Charter. Multiple resolutions of the General Assembly have demanded that Russia withdraw its forces from Ukraine. Those resolutions have failed to stop the war. It has now dragged on for far too long and at far too terrible a cost to the people in Ukraine, in Russia, and beyond. Generations of Ukrainians and Russians have died unnecessarily as the war has brought the world closer to a nuclear confrontation. The longer it continues, the greater the suffering for both nations. This war must end now. It is time for member states to return to the purposes and principles of the Charter, mainly to maintain international peace and security, including through the peaceful settlement of disputes. Mr. President, as we gather today on this third anniversary, what we need is a resolution marking the commitment from all UN member states to bring a durable end to the war. The draft resolution submitted by the United States makes this very point. Our draft implores a swift end to the conflict and further urges a lasting peace between Ukraine and Russia. This is what is needed now, and we urge all member states, including Ukraine and Russia, to join us in this effort. A simple, historic statement from the General Assembly that looks forward, not backwards. A resolution focused on one simple idea: ending the war. A path to peace is possible. Mr. President, that is why the United States opposed putting forward another resolution, and that is why we cannot support Ukraine's resolution, and we urge its withdrawal in favor of a strong statement committing us to end the war and work towards a lasting peace. The United States also requests the General Assembly take action on the United States' proposed resolution immediately following consideration of the Ukraine-drafted resolution. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the United States. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation to introduce draft amendment A/ES-11/L-12.
Господин Председатель, уважаемые коллеги! Сегодня мы с вами являемся свидетелями исторических событий, выпадающих на долю далеко не каждому. На наших глазах оформляется многополярный мир, который должен был появиться еще тридцать лет назад по завершению Холодной войны, подвершив черту под идеологическим противостоянием между СССР и Западом. Тогда мир был полон надежд на лучшее будущее, совьет-юнион и взаимовыгодное сотрудничество ключевых игроков в интересах всего человечества, прекращение войн и формирование новых неделимых систем безопасности, где бывшие противники стали бы соратниками и вместе решали бы бездомные проблемы. К сожалению, тогда эта логика не смогла выстрадать, и идеология сотрудничества была постепенно заменена на философию игры с моря. Это было не наша логика, и много раз предупреждали о тех опасностях, которые несет за собой подобную войну. В итоге мир в конечном счете оказался на грани Третьей мировой войны из-за реализуемого западными странами в своих геополитических интересах на наших границах антироссийского проекта Украины. Его ключевым этапом стал хантизационный государственный перерыв. Игра, которая состоялась на границах, была ключевой этапом в 2014 году. В результате, которой власти западной помощи пришло критивное меньшинство, исповедующие идеалы крайнего национализма и русофотизма, нетерпимое новому мнению и ко всему русскому. Кононической и православной вере воспевающие сотрудников Hitlerских полачей, которые вместе с ними убили в годы Второй Мировой войны сотни тысяч евреев, цыган, поляков, русских и украинцев. Этот режим развязал жестокую войну против своих русскоязычных соотечественников в нашей стране, пытаясь стереть их идентичность и заменить ее на идеалы махрового украинского национализма. Тем самым Украина сама запустила часоводный магазин самоуничтожения, от ненависти, нетерпимости и вражды. Его могли остановить Минские соглашения, одобренные Советом Безопасности ООН, ровно десять лет назад. Но вместо их выполнения, киевский режим, при покровительстве своих западных спонсоров, как мы все с вами сегодня уже знаем, выбрал курс на их саботаж. Параллельно активно вооружались и готовились к поднимению. Этот механизм попытались еще раз остановить граждане Украины, три четверти которых мая две тысячи девятнадцатого года проголосовали за нового украинского президента Владимира Зеленского, обещавшего установить Зеленский восток страны, защищать русскоязычный язык и права русскоязычных граждан, прекратить дирализацию нацистских приспешников и восстановить добрососедские отношения с Россией. Однако, став президентом, он биролом вернул страну на прежний саму убийство и человек, ненавистный чисто русски. Всё это время Россия со своей стороны проявляла терпение и выдержку, не поддаваясь на провокации киевского западных спонсоров. При этом мы четко давали понять, что не госям русских людей, не позволим издеваться над ними, ни один насильственен, перепримотив их идентичность. Еще одно простое решение для России было вступление Украины в НАТО, создававшее неприемлемые военно-стратегические риски для нашей страны. Мы пытались по-хорошему договориться, как с его русским, так и с востонским. Но нас не захотели слушать и воспринимать. Не только лишь когда три года назад стало совершенно очевидно, что обе упомянутые красные линии Украины скоро перейдет, мы были вынуждены начать нашу специальную войну. Мы четко зафиксировали цель. При этом с самого первого дня мы говорили о том, что готовы добиться реалистичности. Nous avons dit que nous étions prêts à réussir la réalisation de l'objectif, de la mettre en place, et nous avons dit que nous étions prêts. Monsieur le Président, aujourd'hui, le régime quiifé, qui est sur la frontière d'une position militaire dangereuse, il laisse des milliers de femmes et de hommes à mourir, qui sont sous la pression de la majorité, qui doit être mobilisé. Pour Zelensky, ses clients, la partie occidentale, et ceux qui ont refusé de voter, dans la violation de la constitution ukrainienne, à part qu'ils trouvaient que c'était inacceptable d'avoir une discussion de la paix sur la situation. Ils n'ont pas eu le courage de parler de la paix sur la situation. Ils n'ont pas eu le courage de parler de la paix sur la situation. Certains sponsors occidentaux, avant tout les États-Unis, ont voulu attaquer la lutte contre la Russie en avril 2002, et ont été arrêtés par certains sponsors occidentaux de l'Angleterre. Ils ont également interdit de parler de la lutte contre la Russie, et de leurs accords de l'Angleterre. En passant trois ans, la Ukraine a obtenu la aide occidentale de cent millions de dollars. La paysage occidental a reçu des bilions de dollars d'aide, et elle a été soutenue. Autrement dit, la Ukraine est devenue quelque chose comme une compagnie militaire, qui combatait pour des intérêts géopolitiques occidentaux, et le conflit est devenu un classique. Lors de cela, l'armée ukrainienne a subi des pertes catastrophiques, et la capitulation du régime quiifé est une question de temps. Nous l'avons dit plusieurs fois, incluant cette campagne, en essayant de rapprocher les pays occidentaux à tout prix. Zelensky a déroulé une agression suicidaire contre la région russie, et comme nous le savons aujourd'hui, il a été témoigné. Comme nous le savons aujourd'hui, des soldats ukrainiens ont été tués et blessés par des milliers de gens. Des milliers de citoyens qui étaient asservis ont été tués et torturés. Et les occupants ukrainiens ont participé à la pillage et à la violence. La croyance était que la Russie allait réagir de manière aussi brutale que la publicité aurait jamais fait. Ils ont aussi fait la provocation anti-russie, une provocation de la bouche, une provocation de la bouche, qui a été poursuivie par le régime quiifé. La guerre quiifé, comme on le sait, n'a pas réussi. De plus, Zelensky a détruit le lacan de la frontière ouest, et la catastrophe de la frontière est déclenchée. Les résidents de la région quiifé ont des ressources, ils sont tous contrôlés. La armée ukrainienne contrôle déjà trois tiers de la territoire, et elle ne fait que gagner des pertes. La police russie réussit à avancer dans la zone de Donbass et de la frontière quiifé, en passant des milliers de personnes. Chaque jour, la nouvelle partie de la réunion de la République est amenée. Désolé, les nouvelles terres de la guerre libérées, et la nouvelle figure de l'armée ukrainienne, qui a transformé la guerre en canne à flèches, Zelensky a commencé. De nouveaux régions ukrainiens veulent revenir à des milliers de gens, et ils ont démontré leur propagande ukrainienne, et ils ne sont pas les habitants de cette pays. Nous avons dit ne pas, nous combattons pas pour la terre, nous combattons pour la vie. Nous savons tous que la situation du régime Zelensky, dans les dernières semaines, est évidente pour tous les sponsors quiifés, les États-Unis. La partie occidentale de l'État de l'État, le gouvernement républicain, qui a été présidé par le président Trump, a finalement vu le visage de la vraie tête de la présidente ukrainienne, a réalisé qu'il ne s'intéressait pas à la peine de la peine, et qu'il craint de voter, et qu'il a peur de voter, et qu'il a peur de voter. Il est prêt à porter la mort de sa propre autorité, de tout le peuple d'Ukraine, et de toutes les richesses naturelles. Ils se sont cachés, et continuent à se cacher, les facteurs corrompus ukrainiens, qui ont été détruits par la violence, par la corruption ukrainienne, par la vente de l'artillerie occidentale à des milliards de dollars, qui ont volé la liberté de parole, qui ont vendu des armes à des milliers de dollars. Le nombre de ceux qui veulent quitter l'Ukraine et sauver la pression, et les noms de la Russie, le démonstration, a atteint le niveau des pensées des États-Unis, mais le régime quiifé ne l'ouvre pas. Il est clair que dans ces conditions, le chef de la ville quiifé, qui a été détruit par l'artiste comique, ne peut pas permettre à la Russie et aux États-Unis de réguler la crise ukrainienne, et de supprimer les causes qui l'ont causé. Que le conflit est devenu radical, et que les peuples sont soumis à des négociations directes, ils sentent la pánique des pays européens, où tous ces ans, ils ne ont pas seulement aidé les clients quiifés et purifié leurs crimes, mais ils ont aussi mis en cause la rousseauisme, ils ont mis en cause la fausse idée, ils ont mis en cause la pensée des objectifs et des objectifs, et en conséquence, ils ont fait un énorme puzzle de l'huile, ils doivent y aller, ils sont en train de lutter. Ils essaient de ignorer le fait que le chef a changé, et a mis en place un certain appel, le seul obstacle à la route est le régime quiifé, et le fait qu'il change le vent, et qu'il est clair que sans la main et sans la voix, ces pauvres gens de la terre, même si ils restent, continuent à recevoir le message de la terre, comment vivre selon les principes de la paix. Mesdames et messieurs, le projet de vote du Royaume-Uni Ukrainien est maintenant en train de se mettre en œuvre, et il est déclaré par cette groupe, qui a essayé, malgré la réalité de la terre, d'une part, de mettre en place des éléments clés, la forme quiifée, et de l'obtention d'un processus de réaction, et d'une autre, de la maximisation des éléments clés, leur donner une forme cercle, afin que les yeux ne se brouillent pas autant que ce qui est arrivé aujourd'hui, qui a déclenché des attaques comme celle de nombreuses entreprises internationales. Ils ont besoin de chiffres, afin de leur soutenir, et d'essayer de l'amener à l'épreuve encore un peu. Ils vont payer le prix du régime quiifé, et ils vont se demander. Les gens qui font le vote, comment il serait juste et bénéfique de voter pour deux textes qui seraient le bon et le mauvais. Aujourd'hui, devant chacun de vous, vous allez appuyer sur le bouton de vote, sur le projet de vote du Royaume-Uni Ukrainien, il y a un vote, soit pour jouer avec Zelensky et ses sponsors, qui sont fidèles à la réalité, soit pour faire un vote clair pour les marchés pratiques et réalistiques, qui sont capables d'arrêter les actions militaires ukrainiennes dans le prochain moment. Ne soyez pas trompés, votez contre le projet ukrainien, prenez le bon choix. Le deuxième projet de résolution présente, c'est un texte sans doute, un pas à la direction correcte, afin que l'initiative en pleine mesure corresponde au fait que le processus américain est en pleine mesure de la réaction, nous avons mis en place un processus de réaction, nous avons introduit une amende à cause de la corruption, à cause de la criminalité ukrainienne, ce qui, en fait, n'est pas une fois, et ce qui est capable de réguler, comme ça le propose le texte des États-Unis. Nous comptons sur la soutien de toutes les delegations de l'État, votez pour notre loi. Ce qui concerne le document présenté, la loi de l'État, des pays européens, alors ils sont orientés vers un amendement à la base du texte américain. Le leur adoption va transformer le projet en deux, avec tous les arguments, dans un autre, l'anti-russie, avec une ultimatum, avec un processus de protection, qui ne s'additionnera à la régulation du conflit, et ne différeront rien de la précédente politique, de la production de cette spéciale. Nous voterons contre cette loi, et nous invitons tous les membres de l'État, et nous voterons contre elles, et nous demandons à tous les pays membres de l'État de faire la même chose.
Je remercie le représentant distingué de la Fédération Russie. Je donne le droit à la représentante distinguée de la France de présenter le projet de résolution A/ES iPhone 11 slash L period 13, L period 14, et L period 15.
Monsieur le Président, j'ai l'honneur de présenter au nom de la France, les 23 États membres de l'Union européenne et du Royaume-Uni, trois amendements et trois projets de résolution A/ES L11, déposés par les États-Unis d'Amérique, que nos pays ne soutiendront pas en l'état. Ils s'appuient sur des messages simples, qui reflètent la situation réelle en Ukraine, celle d'une guerre d'agression menée par la Russie contre son voisin. Le premier amendement remplace les mots Russo-Ukrainien par Invasion à grande échelle de l'Ukraine par la Fédération Russie. Le deuxième amendement reaffirms notre engagement pour la souveraineté, l'indépendance, l'unité et l'intégrité territoriale de l'Ukraine dans ses frontières internationalement reconnues. Le troisième amendement appelle à une paix juste, durable et globale en Ukraine, qui respecte la charte des Nations Unies et les principes de souveraineté territoriale. Nous appelons l'ensemble des États membres à voter en faveur de ces trois amendements, qui rappellent qu'il y a dans ce conflit un état agresseur et un état agressé, et qui marque notre attachement à la paix, une paix juste et durable, qui doit avoir profondément la charge des Nations Unies et le droit international. Votez en faveur de ces amendements, c'est voter en faveur de la charte des Nations Unies et ses principes. C'est voter en faveur du droit international. Je vous remercie. Monsieur le Président, je vais prononcer une intervention nationale. Nous sommes réunis aujourd'hui, trois ans, jour après jour, depuis le début de la invasion à grande échelle de l'Ukraine par la Russie, pour appeler à une paix globale, juste et durable en Ukraine. Il y a trois ans, la Russie a lancé une guerre brutale et injustifiable contre un état souverain, qui ne la menaçait pas en rien, et donc elle occupait déjà illégalement une partie du territoire depuis 2014. En faisant cela, la Russie a violé, et continue à violer, flagrément la charte des Nations Unies et les principes de souveraineté et d'intégrité territoriale que nous avons tous en partage. La Russie inflige depuis trois ans des souffrances insupportables et incorrigibles sur la population civile ukrainienne. Des millions de hommes et de femmes ukrainiens sont aujourd'hui réfugiés ou ont été déplacés. La Russie bombarde indiscriminément les villes et les installations énergétiques civiles de l'Ukraine. Elle présente un risque, ce risque est la sécurité nucléaire. Elle aggrave la crise alimentaire dans le monde entier. Elle bafoue le droit international humanitaire. Elle se rend coupable de crimes de guerre, voire de crimes contre l'humanité. Les auteurs de ces crimes devront rendre compte. La France poursuivra son soutien international et ukrainien ainsi qu'à l'ensemble des mécanismes d'enquête visant à établir les responsabilités pour les crimes commis par la Russie en Ukraine. Monsieur le Président, la Russie doit cesser sa guerre d'agression en Ukraine. Depuis le 16 mars 2022, le Cour international de justice a demandé à la Russie de suspendre immédiatement ses opérations militaires. Depuis le 24 février 2022, c'est la huitième fois que cette assemblée est réunie pour condamner l'agression russe et appeler au respect de l'intégrité territoriale de l'Ukraine. La France est engagée à régler le conflit. Nos autorités sont à l'heure. Nous sommes à haut niveau et travaillons sur cela. Nous voulons une paix mondiale juste et durable, fondée sur la charte des Nations Unies et le droit international. Une paix qui ne récompense pas l'agresseur, qui ne bafoue pas les droits de l'agressé, qui respecte la souveraineté, l'intégrité territoriale et l'indépendance de l'Ukraine. Cette assemblée depuis trois ans, avec ses résolutions sur la situation en Ukraine, a été le seul compass moral de cette organisation, la garantie d'un ordre international basé sur des règles, de l'égalité légale des États, là où le principe de sécurité a échoué. La assemblée générale a dit le droit. Aujourd'hui, elle peut contribuer à la paix, à tracer un chemin vers une paix solide, juste et de long terme, en accord avec nos règles communes. Dans cet esprit, chers et chers collègues, apportons tous notre plein soutien au projet de résolution proposé ce jour par l'Ukraine. Il est équilibré, consensuel. Il est l'aboutissement d'un vrai processus de négociation inclusif et transparent. Nous appelons tous les États membres à le soutenir. Depuis le début de l'agression, l'Ukraine se défend, conformément à l'article 51 de la Charte. Elle veut la paix, elle veut que cesse l'agression, elle veut participer à tout effort de réglement du conflit. C'est la raison. Un règlement du conflit qui serait décidé sans l'Ukraine, ni l'Europe, ne serait durable. Il ne serait pas une paix lasting. Il établirait la primacité de force sur le droit, en légitimiser le claim de sphères d'influence en déshéritage de l'égalité légale des États entre les États. Il préparerait les guerres de demain. Le soutien de l'assemblée générale pour la résolution ukrainienne n'est pas juste un autre vote. La assemblée générale doit tenir le cap, celui de la souveraineté des États et du respect pour leur intégrité territoriale, celui de la responsabilité et de la justice. Je vous remercie.
Je remercie le représentant distingué de la France. Le représentant d'Ukraine a dit que, après avoir écouté l'introduction de tous les documents L, l'assemblée va immédiatement prendre en considération le projet de résolution A/ES iPhone 11 slash L period 10. Le représentant des États-Unis a dit que le projet de résolution A/ES iPhone 11 slash L period 11 va être pris en considération immédiatement après l'action sur la résolution A/ES iPhone 11 slash L point 10. C'est sur le fait que, si l'assemblée avait décidé, et si l'assemblée avait ensuite adopté la résolution L period 10, la session d'urgence 11 va être adjointe temporièrement après la conclusion du débat sur l'item 5. Y a-t-il des objections? Je n'entends pas d'objection, donc c'est décidé. Nous allons maintenant prendre en considération la résolution A/ES 11 slash L period 10 et L period 11, et les amendements A/ES iPhone 11 slash L period 12, L period 13, L period 14, et L period 15. En ce qui concerne, puisque la résolution A/ES iPhone 11 slash L 13, L period 14, et L period 15 ont été seulement circulées aujourd'hui, il sera nécessaire de relancer la provision relatives de Règles 78, les règles de procédure qui lisent comme suit: Comme règle générale, aucune proposition ne sera discutée ou mise en vote à toute réunion de la Générale Assembly, à moins que des copies ne soient circulées à toutes les delegations, ni plus tard que le jour précédent de la réunion. À moins que je n'entende pas d'objection, je prendrai que l'assemblée accepte de relancer la Règle 78. C'est décidé. Pour votre information, la résolution et les amendements ont été annulés pour les sponsorisations. Je donne le droit à la représentante du Secrétaire.
Merci, monsieur le Président. J'aimerais aborder la co-sponsorship des six documents L, un par un. Tout d'abord, sur L 10. Depuis la soumission de la résolution, et en plus des delegations listées sur le document L, les pays suivants sont devenus co-sponsors de A/ES 11 slash L 10: Antiguan-Barbuda, Capo Verde, Fiji, Myanmar, Papua New Guinea, Suriname, et Tonga. J'aimerais également annoncer que depuis la soumission de la résolution, that since the submission of the draft resolution, the delegations of Costa Rica, Hungary, Marshall Islands, the Federated States of Micronesia, North Macedonia, Palau, and Saint Kitts and Nevis have withdrawn their co-sponsorship of A/ES-11/L ten. If any countries wish to co-sponsor A/ES-11/L ten, please signify by pressing the microphone button now. I see none. So now we move on to L eleven. Since the submission of the draft resolution and in addition to the delegations listed on the L document, the following countries have also become co-sponsors of A/ES-11/L eleven: Albania, Argentina, Georgia, Hungary, Israel, and North Macedonia. If any other countries wish to co-sponsor A/ES-11/L eleven, please signify by pressing the microphone button now. There are none. Next, on to L twelve. If any countries wish to co-sponsor A/ES-11/L twelve, please signify by pressing the microphone button now. There are no additional co-sponsors for L twelve, so now we go on to L thirteen. Since the submission of the draft amendment and in addition to the delegations listed on the L document, the following countries have also become co-sponsors of A/ES-11/L thirteen: Canada, Iceland, Italy, Liechtenstein, Monaco, Norway, the Republic of Moldova, and Switzerland. If any other countries wish to co-sponsor A/ES-11/L thirteen, please signify by pressing the microphone button now. I see Andorra. Next, we move to L fourteen. If any countries wish to co-sponsor A/ES-11/L fourteen, please signify by pressing the microphone button now. Andorra. That's it. And then next, on to L fifteen. Since the submission of the draft amendment and in addition to the delegations listed on the L document, the following countries have also become co-sponsors of A/ES-11/L fifteen: Canada, Iceland, Italy, Liechtenstein, Monaco, Norway, Republic of Moldova, and Switzerland. If any other countries wish to co-sponsor A/ES-11/L fifteen, please signify by pressing the microphone button now. Andorra. Montenegro. That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the representative of the Secretariat. Delegations wishing to make a statement in explanation of vote before the vote on any proposal item and any proposal under this item, including the proposed amendments, are invited to do so now in one intervention. After action on all of them, there will be an opportunity for explanation of vote after the vote on any or all of them. Before giving the floor for explanation of vote before the vote, may I remind delegation that explanations of vote are limited to ten minutes and should be made by delegation from their seats. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of China.
主席和平窗口正在开启。
I thank the distinguished representative of China. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Paraguay.
Gracias, presidente. Desde hace tres años, las muertes han ido en aumento y la devastación han traído terribles consecuencias humanitarias, económicas y de infraestructura, críticas para todos nosotros en un mundo tan interconectado, pero principalmente desastrosa para aquellos países hermanos más directamente implicados por cercanías geográficas, por vinculación sociocultural y por las redes de comercio e inversión. El desastre no solo no se ha detenido sino que se ha profundizado. La mayoría de esta asamblea general y de todos los barrios de la carta debe ser el mantenimiento de la paz y la erradicación de la guerra. La responsabilidad de esta asamblea general, además de la denuncia y la condena, es la búsqueda de la eficacia que permita lograr un marco en el que los principales actores en el conflicto puedan llegar a un entendimiento de fondo en sus diferencias. Vemos que la situación sigue invariable y que un cese al fuego es algo urgente y necesario, puesto que además de enfrentar a los países beligerantes en conflicto, significa una seria amenaza a la seguridad en la región inmediata y también para la paz y la seguridad internacional. La asamblea general ha venido aplicando durante los últimos tres años los mismos remedios a una enfermedad que nos remite y persistir en ello puede llevar a los países directamente involucrados a la ruina y a esta organización a un mayor descrédito. El Paraguay considera que es el momento de buscar nuevos caminos, nuevas oportunidades. Nos parece que la propuesta nueva, L once, ofrece eso, una nueva oportunidad para hacer una pausa y acercarnos por medio del diálogo entre todos los actores involucrados e interesados a una solución de fondo. Presidente, el Paraguay ha apoyado de manera determinada y permanente la paz con su voto positivo a las resoluciones aprobadas en relación a esta realidad. Te deseamos que concluya y resaltamos por ello que las resoluciones ES-11/4 del 2022 y ES-11/6 del 2023, aprobadas por esta asamblea general en pasadas reuniones de esta sesión especial, siguen vigentes y son parte de la normativa internacional. Sin embargo, no es menos cierto que tenemos la oportunidad de una nueva aproximación a la búsqueda de la paz y el entendimiento entre las partes de conflicto que Paraguay desea apoyar en esta oportunidad. Por lo anterior, mi país votará a favor de la propuesta L once y sustendrá en la propuesta L diez. Muchas gracias.
I thank the representative of Paraguay and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Indonesia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Indonesia has consistently called for an immediate cessation of hostilities to end the war in Ukraine and for peace to prevail. This position is firmly rooted in Indonesia's principled foreign policy, one that upholds the UN Charter, adherence to international law, respects territorial integrity, and promotes peaceful settlement of dispute through an inclusive process. Our president has repeatedly reaffirmed Indonesia's commitment to peace in Ukraine and has even contributed by putting forward a peace proposal to push the parties towards negotiation and a comprehensive settlement. Lasting peace requires all parties to sit together and give diplomacy a chance to end a conflict that continues to have grave humanitarian consequences. The devastation that emanates from conflict in Ukraine is undeniable, both for the Ukrainian people as well as to the world at large, including to the Global South. Therefore, Indonesia believes that the General Assembly, through this emergency special session, must send a strong and unified message, not that of a division, in response to this situation. Indonesia hopes that any decision taken by the General Assembly today reflects a genuine commitment to resolving the conflict. We must ensure that any resolution adopted here in the Assembly is not merely symbolic. It must be future-proof, genuinely advances peace, and effectively implementable. At this critical juncture, we cannot afford the resolutions that merely serve as trophies on a shelf. Let us therefore work together to uphold the following principles: respect to the UN Charter, international law, and human rights; respect to territorial integrity of any nation; ensure that double standards have no place in the multilateral system; and to guarantee that peace prevails through peaceful settlement of dispute based on an inclusive process that addresses the concerns of all parties. Indonesia's position today on any document will reflect our firm commitment to these principles. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Indonesia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of South Africa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we mark the third anniversary of the conflict between Russia and Ukraine. The failure to resolve this conflict and its outbreak is a stark indictment of the commitment to the central tenet of this organization, which is the peaceful resolution of conflict. South Africa continues to call for the urgent cessation of the Russia-Ukraine conflict in order to prevent the further loss of life and the destruction of Ukraine's infrastructure. Every effort must be made to de-escalate the conflict. South Africa remains firmly committed to the need for a peaceful and negotiated resolution of the conflict within a rules-based system centered on international law, including the respect for human rights and the principles of the UN Charter. The sovereignty and territorial integrity of all states remain inviolable. In this light, South Africa supports all efforts to bring the conflict to an end and welcomes all efforts to bring about negotiations. We remain steadfast in our commitment to peaceful resolution of the conflict through a negotiated settlement with all parties to the conflict having a seat at the table. We have always maintained that a commitment to inclusivity is key to deliver the buy-in of all parties to the conflict and to provide acceptable solutions to the parties. The importance of compromise cannot be overemphasized in this instance and we thus encourage the parties to approach the negotiation talks as such. South Africa stated this at the conference held in Switzerland last year and we state it again today. Mr. President, while South Africa acknowledges that the resolution before this Assembly recognizes the centrality of the principles of the UN Charter and that it speaks to a cessation of hostilities, South Africa maintains that the current resolution does not go far enough in terms of inclusivity and creating a positive momentum towards a peaceful negotiation. South Africa reiterates the importance to make real and meaningful progress towards the peace rather than contribute towards further divisiveness. We have had resolutions similar to this over the last three years, yet the war continues. As members of the General Assembly, representing the international community, we should, through our words and actions, take actions that promote peace. If you continue doing what we have been doing and it doesn't rip positive results, then we should consider a different approach. We are at the point of inflection in this conflict with the urgency to seize the momentum towards a negotiated settlement. There is currently an opportunity that is being presented to this Assembly to reflect on the approach to this particular conflict and perhaps take a different path towards peace. It is our view that the current text does not resonate with the renewed impetus towards a negotiated settlement. In conclusion, Mr. President, South Africa urges the parties to the conflict to begin to identify areas of common interest rather than to continue upon divergent ground. It is in this context that South Africa will abstain from this resolution as proposed by Ukraine. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of South Africa. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United States.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the United States urges member states to vote no on the European Union and Russian Federation amendments to the U.S. draft resolution. We cannot support them. These amendments pursue a war of words rather than an end to the war. They attempt to add the attempt to add this language detracts from what we are trying to achieve with this forward-looking resolution. A firm consensus from the members of this body to unite behind a resolution calling for the end to this conflict. We urge other members to join us in rejecting these amendments as we work toward the goal of building a lasting peace between Ukraine and Russia. I would ask all members to remember that the U.S. resolution is not the peace deal, it is the path to peace. Mr. President, if these amendments pass, the United States would consider that the resolution will no longer resolution will no longer be able to achieve the consensus of this body on the most solemn pursuit, the pursuit of peace. Neither these amendments nor the resolution offered by Ukraine will stop the killing. The UN must stop the killing. We urge all member states to join us in returning the UN to its core mission of international peace and security. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of United States. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Spain.
Gracias, señor presidente. Transcurridos tres años desde el inicio de la no provocada, injustificada y injustificable agresión rusa contra Ucrania, deseo comenzar reiterando la firme condena de España a extracción inmoral y contraria a los principios más elementales, el derecho internacional y de la Carta de Naciones Unidas, tal y como han constatado las subsíguas resoluciones de esta Asamblea General. Rusia continúa a día de hoy con sus bombardeos indiscriminados contra la población y contra la infraestructura civil crítica, violando de forma grande el derecho internacional humanitario. Según la Oficina de la ONU para los Derechos Humanos, al menos 12.600 civiles han muerto en Ucrania desde el inicio de la agresión, 663 de ellos niños. Estos crímenes no pueden ni deben quedar impunes. Reiteramos la necesidad de asegurar una adecuada rendición de cuentas. Ante este escenario, España ha prestado y sigue prestando su apoyo decidido a Ucrania en los ámbitos diplomáticos, humanitario, de reconstrucción y también militar para el ejercicio al derecho de legítima defensa, reconocido por el artículo 51 de la Carta de Naciones Unidas. De forma bilateral y como estado miembro de la UE, la sociedad española ha respondido también con enorme solidaridad a las necesidades del pueblo ucraniano. Desde el inicio de la agresión hemos acogido a 230.000 ciudadanos ucranianos que vivían del conflicto, abriéndoles nuestras escuelas, nuestros hospitales, nuestros pueblos y nuestras ciudades. De cara a las próximas semanas y meses, sostenemos que nada que afecte al futuro de Ucrania debe decidirse sin Ucrania. Si la comunidad internacional debe alcanzar una paz completa y duradera, tiene que contar con Ucrania. Ucrania y los ucranianos tienen que liderar su propio proceso de paz como han venido liderando heroicamente la defensa de su país. Tiene que ser Ucrania la que decida las condiciones para el inicio y conclusión de las negociaciones de paz. La comunidad internacional no puede permitir que se alcance una paz a cualquier precio ni que se recompense a Rusia por haber atacado a un país miembro de esta organización. La paz que se alcance ha de ser una paz basada en el derecho internacional y en la Carta de Naciones Unidas. De lo contrario, el orden internacional y la estabilidad de las fronteras, no solo en Europa sino en todo el mundo, estarán en peligro. Finalmente, exigimos una vez más la retirada inmediata, completa e incondicional de las tropas rusas de la totalidad del territorio ucraniano, de los fronteras internacionalmente recorridas. La agresión rusa contra Ucrania, que es también una agresión contra todos los equis unidos y contra los principios de la Carta, no debe prolongarse ni un día más. Y por todo ello, señor presidente, hemos patrocinado y vamos a votar a favor del proyecto de resolución en el día.
I thank the distinguished representative of Spain. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Pakistan.
Mr. President, as this Assembly meets today, the conflict in Ukraine continues to rage. Three years since it erupted, inflicting unimaginable suffering on millions of people and leaving a trail of destruction and misery. And so far, even as the military and humanitarian crisis has intensified, the pursuit of peace has remained largely absent and elusive. Pakistan is deeply concerned by this conflict that has caused immense human suffering and massive damage to infrastructure, economy, and society. It has had vast consequences for the global economy and particularly for the developing countries. Most ominously, if the hostilities continue, there is an ever-present danger of further military and geographical escalation of this conflict, which poses a clear and significant threat to international peace and security. Pakistan's position on this, as other conflicts, is based on adherence to the principles of the UN Charter: self-determination for peoples, respect for the sovereignty and territorial integrity of states, and non-acquisition of territory by the threat or use of force. Consistent with the Charter, states must also implement international agreements and abide by their respective obligations and respond to the legitimate threats that the principles of the UN Charter have not been universally or consistently applied. In particular, these principles have been flagrantly violated for over decades in the brutal foreign occupation of Chembun, Kashmir, and Palestine. The resolutions of the Security Council calling for the exercise of the right to self-determination by the peoples of Kashmir and Palestine remain to be implemented, imperiling international peace and security. International law and justice must be upheld everywhere. Mr. President, we believe the conflict in Ukraine could have been averted through dialogue and diplomacy. It must be brought to an end now urgently through constructive and inclusive diplomacy. As a country that has seen and suffered the consequences of prolonged conflict in our neighborhood, Pakistan has consistently advocated immediate cessation of hostilities and resumption of dialogue to achieve a just, lasting, and durable solution to this conflict. Pakistan therefore endorses the call for an urgent and swift end to the conflict between Ukraine and Russia and the pursuit of active diplomatic efforts to achieve enduring peace. We see merit in the resolution proposed by the U.S. in this regard. Pakistan had welcomed the early mediatory efforts by Turkey. We also saw value in the endeavor of some countries from the global south to promote a peaceful settlement. We are encouraged that efforts to bring an end to this conflict have gathered wider momentum. We take note of the recent high-level contacts between the U.S. and Russian leadership and commend the role played by the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia in facilitating dialogue and diplomacy. Mr. President, Pakistan would welcome any initiative which helps lead the parties to arrive at a pacific and sustainable settlement of this tragic conflict through constructive and inclusive diplomacy, in full respect for the UN Charter, international law, and relevant multilateral agreements, and which is responsive to the legitimate national security interests of all sides. To this end, Pakistan stands ready to play a constructive role in this Assembly, in the Security Council, and in other forums to promote effective and inclusive diplomatic endeavors aimed at bringing a swift end to this conflict in accordance with international law and the UN Charter. As we vote on different proposals today, we hope everyone will come together, united for peace. We must not miss this opportunity. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Pakistan. And I'll give the floor to the distinguished representative of Azerbaijan.
Mr. President, after three years, the situation in Iran-Ukraine continues to pose a serious threat to peace and security at the regional and global levels. With particular concern is an increased humanitarian impact as civilians bear the major burden of hostilities. Azerbaijan stands for the earliest peaceful settlement through diplomatic means, in full compliance with the norms and the principles of international law guiding international state relations, in particular those relating to the sovereignty and territorial integrity of states and the inviolability of borders, and encourage the dialogue between the parties to that end. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Azerbaijan. And I'll give the floor to the distinguished representative of Canada.
Merci, monsieur le président. Mes collègues, nous sommes tous réunis aujourd'hui pour la cause de la paix. Sur cette question, tout le monde semble être d'accord. Mais est-ce que ce sera la paix avec la justice ou non? Ça c'est la question devant nous aujourd'hui. Quand on semble coup humain de ces trois années d'agressions russes, selon l'Commission des Nations Unies au droit de l'homme, plus de 12.000 civiles ont été tués. Et ça continue, les attaques de drones chaque nuit, chaque jour. Même maintenant, on réchappe du monde sans tachef. Plus de 10 millions d'ukrainiens ont été dépassés, 2 millions de maisons ont damnagées ou détruites dans toute l'Ukraine. La situation s'aggrave. L'année dernière, tous d'enfants ont été tués et plus d'hôpitaux et d'écoles ont été détruits que l'année précédente. J'ai dit il y a trois ans lorsque j'ai pris le podium dans les premiers jours après l'invasion de la Russie, et je le dis maintenant que les actions de la Russie sont une violation flagrante de la charte des Nations Unies, de ses objectifs et de ses principes, de l'égalité souveraine de tous les États, le droit de tous les peuples, le droit de l'autodétermination, le règlement pacifique des différends et l'interdiction du court à la force. Alors que le président Poutine a poursuivi sa guerre d'agression, nos collègues de l'ONU ont amassé des tonnes de prouves des violations par la Russie du droit international et du droit international humanitario, de la torture sexuelle, de l'exécution arbitraire de prisonniers. Le ciblage des civils et leur infrastructure ont perturbé l'électricité, l'enlèvement illégal d'enfants des territoires occupés en Ukraine. Ce sont des réalités dont nous devons parler, avec laquelle nous devons agir ensemble. Mr. President, let us realize that while we are meeting and while we are talking, the drones are falling, falling even while international leaders are meeting in Kyiv. Let us be clear: nothing justifies this war. These annexations of Ukrainian territory after sham votes at gunpoint. Canada will be voting yes in favor of the Ukrainian motions and in favor of amendments that speak out on the principles of the United Nations and the principles of the Charter. We believe that the evidence shows that President Putin wants to expand a new Russian empire. That goal is incompatible with the principles and purposes of the United Nations Charter. Mr. President, Canada wants peace for Ukraine. The world wants peace. Ukraine wants peace more than any member state here. The question is: what kind of peace will it be? Will it be a peace based on justice and on the Charter and on the principles for which we stand? Or will it be a peace that is a result of an imposition? The cost of colonialism at gunpoint, the cost of Ukraine's children, of its territory, these costs are too high. No state has the right to call on another to make these kinds of sacrifices. We must not accept the lie that of all equal sovereign states, Russia's course is now somehow fixed, unmovable, and that we must discard the UN Charter to accommodate President Putin's imperial ambitions. Russia could end this war today. They could stop the drones today. They could make sure they don't drop on children tonight. They can send their troops home today. We welcome the support of member states for Ukraine's resolution. We once more urge all member states to condemn the actions of Russia. Together, we must stand for the values of the UN Charter that Russia has tried and tries each and every day to destroy. Ukrainians have been fighting and dying not just to protect their sovereignty and their territory. They're fighting for all of us. They're fighting to protect the principles that are enshrined in the UN Charter that have, after all, prevented worldwide war for close to 80 years now. The peace that Ukraine seeks, as the Secretary-General said yesterday, is a just, a sustainable, and a comprehensive peace, one that fully upholds Ukraine's sovereignty, its independence, its territorial integrity, within borders that are internationally recognized in accordance with the UN Charter, with international law, and with the resolutions of the General Assembly. Mr. President, as I close, I want to say to the delegation from Ukraine and to the people and government of Ukraine: you are fighting for us all. You are not just fighting for your own country. What you have borne for three years is literally unbearable. We are inspired by your bravery, and we must match your bravery with our own courage today. We are standing with you. Canada will always stand up for Ukraine. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Canada. We have heard the last speaker in explanation of vote before the vote. Before proceeding further, I wish to address the question concerning the majority required for the adoption of the draft resolutions. I would like to remind members that Rule 84 of the Rules of Precaution provides as follows, and I quote: "Decisions of the General Assembly on amendments to proposals relating to important questions and on parts of such proposals put to the vote separately shall be made by a two-thirds majority of the members present and voting." Therefore, it is decided that a two-thirds majority of the members present and voting is required for the adoption of the draft resolution A-Es11-L11. The adoption of draft amendments A-Es11-L12 to L15 would also require two-thirds majority of the members present and voting. In light of Article 18, Paragraphs 2 and 3 of the Charter of the United Nations, is there any objection to taking action on draft resolution A-Es11-L10 and L11 by a two-thirds majority of the members present and voting? I see no objections. The two-thirds majority of members present and voting is therefore required for the adoption of draft resolutions A-Es11-L10 and L11. The two-thirds majority of members present and voting is therefore also required for the adoption of draft amendments A... The Assembly will turn to draft resolution A-Es11-L10 and L11 one by one. The Assembly will now take a decision on draft resolutions A-Es11-L10 entitled "Advancing a Comprehensive, Just, and Lasting Peace in Ukraine." A recorded vote has been requested. We shall now begin the voting process. Those in favor of draft resolution A-Es11-L10, please signify. Those against, abstentions. Those against abstentions.
The Assembly is now voting on draft resolution A/ES11/L10 entitled "Advancing a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine." Will all delegations confirm that their votes are accurately reflected on the screen? The voting has been completed. Please lock the machine.
The result of the vote is as follows. In favor, ninety-three; against, eighteen; abstentions, sixty-five. Draft resolution A/ES11/L10 is adopted. Before we proceed to take action on draft resolution A/ES11/L11, in accordance with Rule 90 of the Rules of Procedure, the Assembly shall first take a decision on draft amendments A/ES11/L12 to L15, one by one. The Assembly will now take a decision on draft amendment A recorded vote has been requested. We shall now begin the voting process. Those in favor of draft amendment A/ES11/L12, please signify. Those against abstentions.
The Assembly is now voting on draft amendment A/ES11/L12. Will all delegations confirm that their votes are accurately reflected on the screen? The voting has been completed. Please lock the machine.
The result of the vote is as follows. In favor, thirty-one; against, seventy-one; abstentions, fifty-nine. The draft amendment A/ES11/L12 is not adopted. The Assembly will now take a decision on draft amendment A recorded vote has been requested. We shall now begin the voting process. Those in favor of draft amendment A/ES11/L13, please signify. Those against abstentions.
The Assembly is now voting on draft amendment A/ES11/L13. Will all delegations confirm that their votes are accurately reflected on the screen? The voting has been completed. Please lock the machine.
The result of the vote is as follows. In favor, sixty; against, eighteen; abstentions, eighty-one. The draft amendment A/ES11/L13 is adopted. The Assembly will now take a decision on draft amendment A recorded vote has been requested. We shall now begin the voting process. Those in favor of draft amendment A/ES11/L14, please signify. Those against abstentions.
The Assembly is now voting on draft amendment A/ES11/L14. Will all delegations confirm that their votes are accurately reflected on the screen? The voting has been completed. Please lock the machine.
The result of the vote is as follows. In favor, seventy-nine; against, sixteen; abstentions, sixty-seven. The draft amendment A/ES11/L14 is adopted. The Assembly will now take a decision on draft amendment A/ES11/L15. A recorded vote has been requested. We shall now begin the voting process. Those in favor of draft amendment A/ES11/L15, please signify. Those against abstentions.
The Assembly is now voting on draft amendment A/ES11/L15. Will all delegations confirm that their votes are accurately reflected on the screen? The voting has been completed. Please lock the machine.
The result of the vote is as follows. In favor, eighty-three; against, sixteen; abstentions, sixty-one. The draft amendment A/ES11/L15 is adopted. Since the draft amendment A/ES11/L13, comma, L14, and L15 were adopted, we shall proceed to take action on draft resolution A/ES11/L11 as amended. The Assembly will now take a decision on draft resolution A/ES11/L11 as amended, entitled "The Path to Peace." In absence of request for a recorded vote, may I take it? I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ukraine.
Thank you, Mister President. The delegation of Ukraine would like to request a recorded vote on the draft resolution Thank you.
A recorded vote has been requested. We shall now begin the voting process. Those in favor of draft resolution A/ES11/L11 as amended, please signify.
The Assembly is now voting on draft resolution A/ES11/L11 as amended, entitled "The Path to Peace." Will all delegations confirm that their votes are accurately reflected on the screen? The voting has been completed. Please lock the machine.
The result of the vote is as follows. In favor, ninety-three; against, eight; abstentions, seventy-three. Draft resolution A/ES11/L11 as amended is adopted. Before giving the floor for explanation of vote after the vote, may I remind the delegation that explanations of vote on any and all of the proposals and amendment are limited to ten minutes and should be made by delegations from their seats. I give the floor to His Excellency Dag Artelius, Deputy Minister for Foreign Affairs of Sweden on behalf of Nordic countries.
Mister President, I have the honor to speak on behalf of the five Nordic countries: Denmark, Finland, Iceland, Norway, and my own country, Sweden. Today, we mark three years since Russia's full-scale invasion of Ukraine. A Russian war of choice, a war that Russia could end by a single order from its president. For three years, Russia, Ukraine, has defended its people and shown remarkable resilience. During these three years, this General Assembly has repeatedly and overwhelmingly reaffirmed its commitment to the sovereignty, independence, and territorial integrity of Ukraine. Mister President, no one feels the effects of the war more than Ukraine and its people. No one wants peace more than Ukraine. But it needs to be a comprehensive, just... Russia and other potential aggressors must now draw the conclusion that violations of international law will pass without consequences. Such conclusions would risk renewed aggression and undermine global security. Russia must be held to account for the crimes it has committed in and against Ukraine, including for the crime of aggression. Let's be clear, this is not a conflict between two parties. This is a war in which Russia, a permanent UN Security Council member, no less, is the aggressor and Ukraine is the victim. A fundamental starting point for any conflict resolution is that the injured party be part of the process. Ukraine must be involved in any negotiations. Likewise, Europe must be involved in decisions that affect the core of European security. The Nordic message is clear: respect for international law, including the UN Charter, must be ensured. UN member states need a world order based on universally agreed rules, not the imperial ambitions of individual rulers. Mister President, the Nordics were proud to co-sponsor the resolution presented by Ukraine and more than fifty other UN member states. The resolution called for de-escalation, cessation of hostilities, and set the foundation for just and lasting peace in Ukraine. Thank you, Mister President.
I thank the Honorable Deputy Minister for Foreign Affairs of Sweden. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Thailand.
President, Thailand reiterates its unequivocal adherence to all principles and purposes enshrined in the UN Charter and its commitment to upholding international law, including international humanitarian law and international human rights law. Our votes today reflect such longstanding position. As we convene today, President, three years have passed since the conflict began in Ukraine, which has, of course, affected international peace and stability. Thailand remains steadfast in its support for meaningful dialogue aimed at ending fighting and achieving a sustainable and lasting solution to the conflict. We urge all parties to engage in constructive dialogue and diplomacy to resolve the crisis peacefully. Thailand welcomes recent diplomatic efforts towards this end and looks forward to the outcomes we should take into account concerns of all sides. We reiterate our deep concern for the humanitarian situation and reaffirm our collective responsibility to alleviate the plight of civilians affected by the ongoing situation. Civilians and civilian objects must be protected. While all parties concerned must ensure safe, rapid, and unhindered access to humanitarian assistance without discrimination or politicization. On our part, Thailand will continue to support humanitarian efforts for those in need. Thailand, through the Thai Red Cross Society and other entities, has long provided humanitarian assistance to civilians affected by this conflict, including the recent procurement of power generators. President, as a true believer in multilateralism and the rule of law, Thailand is in full support of diplomatic efforts, dialogue, and peace. We join the international community in calling for a de-escalation of conflict and immediate cessation of hostilities and alighting peace in Ukraine at this critical juncture. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Thailand. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Kuwait on behalf of the Gulf Cooperation Council.
Shukran Sayyid Raiz. Bismillah Rahman Rahman.
Thank you, Mister President.
Yes, sir. I had to read this document with my own eyes. The Council of the Arab Emirates is a country of Qatar, the Arab Republic of Saudi Arabia, the Arab Emirates, the United Arab Emirates, the State of Oman, and the Strait of the Aegean, and the country of Kuwait. I have been in the presence of the Secretary of the Arab Emirates to approve the progress of the Ukraine-Ukrainian agreement. And to approve the progress of the Ukraine-Ukrainian agreement. And we have also confirmed our firm support for the United States. We have reiterated our position for respect for the principles of international law and the United Nations Charter. We have affirmed our support for the international order and the peace of the world. And we have affirmed our support for the sovereignty of states and their territorial integrity. And we have affirmed our support for non-interference relations. And we have confirmed our respect for good neighborly relations. In this regard, we would call on the Article 2 of the Charter. It says that the member states have to solve their disputes through peaceful means. And to abstain from using force or threatening to use force. In this regard, we have confirmed the support of the Arab Emirates. And to support the negotiation and the dialogue between the Russian Federation and the Ukraine Union. And to stop the fire and to end the war in a political way. And to stop the dialogue and to resolve the crisis through political means. We must give priority to dialogue. And to talk. And to negotiate. President, the GCC states are attached to a resolution that will help the Ukraine Union as soon as possible. And to see this resolved through diplomatic means in order to achieve a global solution that will make it possible to maintain international peace and security. And to ensure the role of the parties in the conflict. We have taken the responsibility of the dialogue for the last three years. And that has enabled us to ensure the release of hostilities between the two parties. We also want to focus on a solid solution. Union to meet the humanitarian needs of the Ukraine. The GCC has also advocated a solution that will help the United Nations and the European Union to meet the humanitarian needs of the Ukraine. The GCC has also advocated a solution that will help the United Nations and the European Union to meet the humanitarian needs of the Ukraine. The GCC has also advocated a solution that will help the United Nations and the European Union to meet the humanitarian needs of the Ukraine. The GCC has also advocated a solution that will help the United Nations and the European Union to meet the humanitarian needs of the Ukraine. The GCC has also advocated a solution that will help the United Nations and the European Union to meet the humanitarian needs of the Ukraine. The GCC has also advocated a solution that will help the United Nations and the European Union to meet the humanitarian needs of the Ukraine. The GCC has also advocated a solution that will help the United Nations and the European Union to meet the humanitarian needs of the Ukraine. The GCC has also advocated a solution that will help the United Nations and the European Union to meet the humanitarian needs of the Ukraine. The GCC has also advocated a solution that will help the United Nations and the European Union to meet the humanitarian needs of the Ukraine. The GCC has also advocated a solution that will help the United Nations and the European Union to meet the humanitarian needs of the Ukraine. The GCC has also advocated a solution that will help the United Nations and the European Union to meet the humanitarian needs of the Ukraine. The GCC has also advocated a solution that will help the United Nations and the European Union to meet the humanitarian needs of the Ukraine. The GCC has also advocated a solution that will help the United Nations and the European Union to meet the humanitarian needs of the Ukraine. The GCC has also advocated a solution that will help the United Nations and the European Union to meet the humanitarian needs of the Ukraine. The GCC has also advocated a solution that will help the United Nations and the European Union to meet the humanitarian needs of the Ukraine. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Kuwait. Now I give the floor to Her Excellency Lot Machon, State Secretary for Foreign Policy of Denmark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Exactly three years ago today, Russia launched its illegal full-scale invasion of Ukraine. It did so in clear violation of the UN Charter, in continuation of what it started in 2014. Russia's aggression has resulted in a long and brutal war with terrible consequences. It's a war that had millions more displaced and almost thirteen million people in humanitarian need. Today, we have gathered here in the General Assembly to show our solidarity with the plight of Ukraine. Our aim is to advance on a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine grounded in the principles of the Charter. To ensure that our calls for peace leave absolutely no doubt about the UN membership's commitment to the UN principles, the UN Charter, and the territorial integrity and sovereignty of nations. Let there be no doubt: no one wants peace more than Ukraine. We therefore welcome all efforts to bring this senseless war to an end. It needs to be a just, a lasting, and a comprehensive peace. The General Assembly resolution by the United States goes in that direction. With the adopted improvements to the text, it aligns with our shared vision for genuine peace and diplomacy. It refers to the core values we collectively must uphold: the sovereignty, the territorial integrity of states, which are and continues to be the basic principles of the Charter. The resolution correctly states: there is only one aggressor, Russia, and one victim, Ukraine, in this savage war. It also underlines that for any peace to be just, lasting, and comprehensive and in full compliance with the UN Charter, we must ensure that Ukraine's security, territorial integrity, and sovereignty are upheld. In our view, this resolution complements the resolution on advancing a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine, which we co-sponsored and supported. This is why Denmark has decided to vote yes to the US draft resolution with the adopted improvements. I thank you.
I thank Her Excellency, the State Secretary for Foreign Policy of Denmark. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Singapore.
Mr. President, as a staunch supporter of international law and the principles enshrined in the UN Charter, Singapore firmly believes that the sovereignty, political independence, and territorial integrity of all countries, big or small, must be respected. The invasion of one country by another, under any pretext, cannot be justified. It is for this reason that Singapore has always taken a clear, consistent, and principled position on Russia's invasion of Ukraine, which is a clear violation of international law and the UN Charter. For small states like Singapore, upholding international law and the UN Charter is a matter of existential importance. Singapore is also deeply committed to the cause of securing peace and the peaceful settlement of disputes in accordance with the principles of international law as enshrined in the UN Charter. We call on all parties involved in this conflict to negotiate in good faith and step up efforts to bring an end to the hostilities. Mr. President, Singapore has voted in favor of the resolutions tabled by both Ukraine and the United States. It is our hope that the adoption of these resolutions will pave the way for a cessation of hostilities and create the foundation for a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace. I thank you very much for your attention.
I thank the distinguished representative of Singapore. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ecuador.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today is three years since the war in Ukraine began that continues to cause suffering and death. In the first session of this extraordinary emergency session, celebrated on February 28, 2022, a large majority of the international community anticipated that this would happen and that they would not silence the weapons immediately. The humanitarian situation deteriorates every day, and the population needs are increasing, including women, children, and persons in situations of vulnerability, amid the grave crisis of food security that this conflict has created. Mr. President, since this war began, Ecuador has expressed its position in line with the fundamental principles of its external policy that are based on the promotion of peace and the peaceful settlement of international disputes and the rejection of the threat of force. Ecuador's own experience demonstrates that even conflicts of greater complexity can find a peaceful solution. Ecuador believes firmly that it is the moment to compromise and put an end to this war that has led to the loss of hundreds of lives. History has taught us that military means do not bring sustainable peace, and that all conflicts ultimately end in negotiations. In addition, in the cumbre of peace for Ukraine, realized in Switzerland in 2024, President Ecuador Daniel Nogoa offered his good offices to advance a peaceful solution to this conflict. It is in this context that it is urgent that the parties show political willingness, as was expressed by Secretary of State of the United States, to create a path that leads to sustainable peace. The international community must provide their support to these efforts and create the necessary conditions for putting an end to the conflict and giving real impetus to peace. That is why, although Ecuador was not able to vote for a situation like this, it would have been a favorable project if the text was original, the resolution presented by the United States, as well as in favor of the resolution presented by Ukraine, with the support of the European Union. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Ecuador. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Colombia.
Mr. President, the delegation of Colombia has voted on abstention, the project of resolution presented by the government of the United States with regard to Ukraine, taking into consideration the tradition of adherence to international law and negotiated solution to disputes. That has been Colombia's historic position. The Colombian government has been emphatic in opposing war and all actions that attempt to continue with the war over time and that move away from a frank discussion on an equal footing between the parties. Colombia is opposed to any attempt to exclude one of the parties involved in the war from the negotiating process and at providing a lasting response to the conflict. On the understanding that it is only with the participation of both sides that we can see just and lasting peace come about, we also abstain from supporting the resolution, drawing attention to the lack of action for a definitive end to the crisis that would put an end to genocide in the Gaza Strip and the violence generated in the occupied Palestinian territories. The deployment of actions of the global north in Ukraine is a worrying contrast compared to the inaction of the allowing for the systemic violation against the Palestinian people. We would call for an immediate ceasefire between Russia and Ukraine that would lead to negotiations for a just and lasting peace. Colombia voted in favor of human rights, and that is why, once again, we express our firm willingness to support efforts to resolve conflicts and build peace, always with the participation of all parties involved. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Colombia. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Qatar.
I thank you, Mr. President. We ask for the floor to explain our vote after the vote on the draft resolutions that were proposed within the eleventh emergency special session of the United Nations General Assembly here in Qatar. We would like to renew its principled position on the Russian-Ukrainian crisis, which is based on the letter to the Charter's purposes, especially Article 2, Part 4 of the Charter, which forbids the use of force or threatening use of force in international relations. We call upon all member states to respect the territorial integrity and independent and political independence of other states. Qatar renews its call on all parties to engage in negotiations to put an end to the suffering that has had many negative repercussions on the humanitarian side and has affected the global arena. Qatar has exerted humanitarian and diplomatic efforts extensively to participate in resolving this crisis. These efforts are an extension of the state of Qatar's approach to mediation and peaceful resolution of conflict. And here, the state of Qatar welcomes the fact that the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia is hosting talks between Russia and the United States, and we reiterate our support for these efforts to put an end to this crisis. Qatar renews its belief that dialogue is the best solution to disputes, and we reiterate our full readiness to participate in any international resolution effort that aims at finding an immediate and peaceful resolution to this crisis. We also reiterate our interest in keeping all channels of communication open with all interested parties. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Qatar. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Timor-Leste.
Thank you, Mr. President. Timor-Leste voted in favor of the resolution aimed at fostering a comprehensive, just, enduring peace in Ukraine. We underscore the significance of upholding sovereignty, territorial integrity, and adherence to international law. We welcome the ongoing talks between the US and Russia to end the conflict and call for the wider involvement of all parties in the conflict for a lasting peace in Ukraine. We recognize that the ongoing conflict in Ukraine poses a serious threat, not only to its citizens, but also to global stability and security. Timor-Leste called for swift end to the conflict and urges a lasting peace between Ukraine and the Russian Federation. Mr. Chair, our endorsements of the resolutions tabled by the Ukraine and the US is based on the following core principles: first, we affirm the sovereignty and territorial boundaries of every nation, including Ukraine, must be honored and safeguarded; second, we condemn the severe human rights violations and humanitarian crises resulting from aggression. We urgently call for an immediate halt to hostilities; third, we advocate for resolving the conflict through inclusive diplomacy, dialogue, and political negotiations in line with the UN Charter and the international legal standards. We urge all parties involved in the conflict to stop fighting, respect international law, and strive for a peaceful settlement that prioritizes the health, dignity, and well-being of the Ukrainian people. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Timor-Leste, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of New Zealand.
New Zealand co-sponsored and voted in support of the resolution entitled "Advancing a Comprehensive, Just, and Lasting Peace in Ukraine." New Zealand also voted in favor of the amended Path to Peace Resolution, in line with New Zealand's support for all efforts to achieve a comprehensive, just, and lasting end to this war as soon as possible. It has been three years since Russia commenced its illegal, full-scale invasion of Ukraine. New Zealand has consistently denounced that invasion, which was a grave breach of international law, including the UN Charter. New Zealand remains committed to upholding the Charter and international law, including the core rules and norms that underpin international peace and security. This includes respect for sovereignty and territorial integrity and the prohibitions on the use of force and the threat of use of force. New Zealand maintains that Russia's invasion was illegal and unprovoked and breached the prohibition on the use of force in Article 2.4 of the Charter. Our positions today are grounded on those core principles. This war has had a horrific human cost. It has caused immense suffering to the people of Ukraine and has significantly impacted regional and global stability. We welcome the effort that all parties are bringing to the shared endeavor of ending this conflict. We acknowledge the renewed energy the US has brought to these efforts. In seeking an end to this war, it is vital that we do so in a way that best achieves a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in accordance with international law. To do otherwise would be inconsistent with the principles and purposes of this grand organization. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of New Zealand. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Republic of Korea.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we are gathered here once again for an emergency special session of the General Assembly, solemnly commemorating the third anniversary of a war of aggression waged by a permanent member of the Security Council against a sovereign state. This blatant violation of the principles of the UN Charter continues to bring immense suffering to innocent people. There are two goals that everyone can agree on: one, this senseless and unlawful war must come to an end as soon as possible; and, two, we must strive to uphold the fundamental principles of the UN Charter and international law. Now is the time to gather our wisdom and determination to achieve both objectives simultaneously as much as possible. In this light, the Republic of Korea voted in favor of both resolutions proposed by Ukraine and the United States, as well as the amendments to the US texts proposed by the European countries. Mr. President, for the past three years, the war in Ukraine has the war in Ukraine has inflicted unspeakable suffering and devastation. The tears of innocent civilians have long overflowed and are now nearly exhausted. Moreover, this war is now perilously globalized with the security threats in Europe and Asia becoming ever more interconnected. No one imagined that North Korea would take part in this unjust war when it began. As explicitly stated in Ukraine's resolution today, for the first time, the involvement of North Korean forces in Ukraine, in addition to the procurement and use of DPRK weaponry, is deeply troubling. The illegal military cooperation between Russia and DPRK in blatant violation of multiple Security Council resolutions must stop immediately. Mister President, as this senseless war has continued for three years, we support diplomatic efforts and negotiations through though-long overdue to end this war. At this vital juncture, the international community must summon the collective wisdom and resolve to ensure a peace settlement that brings about a just outcome and sustainable peace and to guarantee that such tragedies never occur again. The Republic of Korea reaffirms its commitment to assisting the Ukrainian people as they persevere over the current hardship and rebuild their nation. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Republic of Korea. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Cuba.
Thank you, President. We have repeatedly pointed out to this General Assembly the consequences of a increasingly offensive military doctrine of the United States and NATO, which is leading to the progressive expansion of NATO beyond its borders. Today, the conflict in Ukraine has been the unilateral sanctions have only led to an exacerbation of the situation on the ground and regional and international tensions and have prolonged the conflict. Despite the changes made to the draft resolution L-10, the text still contains divisive, confrontational aspects, politicized aspects that do not really contribute to dialogue and negotiation to achieve genuine lasting peace with the participation of all the parties involved. It does not take into account the legitimate concerns that everyone has or recognize the responsibility of those that instigated aggressive actions that led to the breakout of the conflict. That's why Cuba abstained. What we need is a serious diplomatic solution that is constructive, realistic, achieved by peaceful means in adherence with international law that will guarantee the security and sovereignty of all. Cuba has insisted on this before this General Assembly consistently. In this regard, we have expressed our support for the joint proposal presented by China and Brazil for the peaceful settlement of the crisis in accordance with Cuba's defense of peace and multilateralism. We once again state our failing commitment to the UN Charter and international law and the independence and sovereignty and territorial integrity of states and the self-determination of peoples, as well as our firm position with regard to the use of force or the threat of the use of force against any state. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Cuba. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Saudi Arabia.
Señor President. We meet here today after three years have passed. Since the war on Ukraine started and since the crisis began, the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia has called for de-escalation and for the protection of civilians and for the peaceful resolution of conflict through dialogue and an end to hostilities. In a manner that would contribute to the reinstatement of space and stability in the world. We have offered initiatives and efforts. The highness has succeeded in efforts to secure and change prisoners between the two sides with the tesaizat of making humanitarian needs that have increased as the war began. The Kingdom of Saudi Arabia has offered humanitarian aid to Ukraine in response to these needs. Moreover, we hosted the Jeddah meeting on the Ukraine crisis. The Kingdom of Saudi Arabia reiterates the relations that exceptional relations enjoy without parties' own position on the need to abide by the rules of international law and in its genuine efforts to find a just resolution to this crisis and to take advantage of the conditions that may not be repeated to reach this settlement. This facilitating and hosting meetings that establish peace and stability in the world. We hope that these current efforts would contribute to reaching a resolution to the Ukrainian crisis and would lead to everlasting peace through political and diplomatic means and would bolster international peace and security and would save the world from the further humanitarian and security and economic repercussions. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Saudi Arabia. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Turkey.
Mister President, let me start by thanking your excellency for convening this emergency session. After three years of intense conflict with immense humanitarian consequences, the war in Ukraine continues to have profound global implications for international peace and security. It has now become apparent that military means fail to bring peace. And yet, the ultimate solution still lies in diplomacy. We have been witnessing that recently the calls for diplomacy, dialogue, and negotiations are gaining momentum. It is our sincere hope that the current efforts constitute the beginning of the end of the conflict and consequently pave the way for peace. Mister President, even though the latest developments may seem like a novelty for some, they correspond to the longstanding position of Turkey, a consistent proponent for a peaceful resolution of this conflict in line with the UN Charter. Since the very beginning, we have been advocating that the focus should be on reaching a just and lasting solution through negotiations and diplomacy while warning against the risks of escalation in the region. With that in mind, Turkey has remained in direct contact with both sides and opted to communicate its messages without intermediaries. In the meanwhile, we have continued to support Ukraine's territorial integrity, sovereignty, and independence. Ultimately, a just peace can only be achieved through direct dialogue and mutual understanding. The basic principle has shaped our approach to conflict since its outset. From Istanbul talks in March 2022 to Black Sea Green Initiative and the exchange of prisoners of war, Turkey has actively pursued diplomacy and achieved concrete results. As ever, today we stand ready to facilitate an end to this war through negotiations. Mister President, the responsibility of building peace should not be imposed on neither one country nor a group of limited number of countries. It is time that we focus our efforts on a realistic and above all viable peace. Now more than ever, it is necessary to have both sides of the conflict present in the process in order for the peace talks to be successful. As Turkey, we remain committed to playing our part in the pursuit of just and sustainable peace. Turkish votes for both resolutions today and amendments were carefully shaped to reflect this principled policy. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Turkey. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Russian Federation.
Mister President. I will not explain the reasons for which Russia voted against the Ukrainian draft. It is obvious that we have named them many times. The only explanation here is the reason we voted against the American draft. Unfortunately, the absence of our amendment stating that we need to eradicate the root causes of the conflict and also after the European amendments were taken in, the essence of it has become completely distorted. As a result, instead of an appeal for peace, which originally was put there by the American colleagues, we ended up with yet another anti-Russian piece of paper which is distorting unrealistic expectations and representing unrealistic expectations of international society in relation to the way the international community can settle the Ukrainian crisis. This way, yet another opportunity was lost to hear from the General Assembly and appeal for fair, equitable, sustainable peace in Ukraine taking into account the realities on the ground. We were ready to support that, but the EU and its supporters deprived us of this opportunity, thus having devalued and bankrupted the American draft. Under these conditions, we had to vote against a product which was unrealistic and not viable. I think that today, our American colleagues have seen for themselves that the road to peace in Ukraine will not be an easy one and there will be many who will try to make sure that the peace doesn't come for as long as possible. But this shouldn't stop us. We appreciate the initiative of the United States and we do hope that this will be followed by other new initiatives which will finally set aside the party of war in Europe. This is important and this is important first and foremost to save Ukraine and the Ukrainians which are being sacrificed by the expired Ukrainian president in order to save himself and enrich himself. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Russian Federation. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Syrian Arab Republic.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank you for giving me the floor to explain the vote of your Arab Republic. The new Syrian leadership has declared its commitment to a balanced foreign policy that is based on the purposes and principles of the United Nations Charter and aims to establish amicable and friendly relations with all members of the United Nations based on the principles of mutual respect as well as common interests. And in a manner that would bolster efforts to achieve peace and stability throughout the world, away from the policies of axes and political polarization. Therefore, my country has abstained on voting on the draft resolutions and the pursuant amendments. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Syrian Arab Republic. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Tunisia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tunisia voted in favor of the two resolutions presented to the General Assembly today and this is because we firmly believe in the principles of international law. On the Ukrainian resolution, we voted in favor of that resolution because it condemns violations of the United Nations Charter, including Article 2. It is a resolution that defends the right of countries to have sovereignty and to maintain their territorial integrity. My country voted in favor of the US resolution because it calls for a just and comprehensive peace in Ukraine. Tunisia affirms that its vote is based on principles and is not related to any geostrategic calculations. It is a vote that is in favor of the principles of the United Nations laws that are binding to our members of the United Nations Organization. It will see the same amount of commitment and solidarity from the international community when it comes to the Palestinian question and the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination and the right of the state of Palestine to have sovereignty and territorial integrity. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Tunisia. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Brazil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mister President, everyone agrees that the war that has raged in Ukraine in the past three years has to end. Destruction is the only concrete result of three years of violence. Yet, we have decided to abstain on Resolutions L-10 and L-11 in an attempt to preserve an atmosphere that is more conducive to dialogue and the end of this conflict. We encourage member states to focus on building bridges and negotiating in a transparent manner and in due regard for agreed and standard language. In our understanding, neither of the texts before us were ripe for action today. L-10 reiterated concepts that have not, so far, helped us to advance towards peace. L-11, on the other hand, was presented with insufficient time for a constructive process of consultations and adjustment. We believe a landing zone between both projects is still both possible and desirable. We see merits in both texts. Brazil will continue to play a constructive and proactive role, both in future initiatives in this assembly and through our group of Friends for Peace and recognized tenets of negotiation processes. The world wants peace, dialogue, effective multilateralism, and strengthened diplomacy. For long, diplomacy has been criticized for not preventing the war in Ukraine. However, we may now finally realize that when diplomacy falls short, the solution is not less diplomacy, but more. The United Nations is the appropriate forum to bring the parties together, facilitate a lasting agreement, and put an end to this ruthless war. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Brazil. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Islamic Republic of Iran.
As a president, I would like to reiterate my delegation's consistent position, which has been expressed numerous times during the eleventh special session since 2022. The Islamic Republic of Iran reiterates its principal position that all disputes should be resolved through peaceful means and dialogue in accordance with international law, including the Charter of the United Nations. Since the onset of the crisis in Ukraine, the Islamic Republic of Iran has maintained a clear, consistent, and unfavorable position. We have emphasized that all UN member states must fully respect the purposes and principles enshrined in the United Nations Charter as well as international law, including the principles of sovereignty, independence, unity, territorial integrity, and the imperative to refrain from the threat or use of force. The Islamic Republic of Iran has repeatedly called for an immediate cessation of hostilities and de-escalation of tensions. It has been long... It has long been the position of my delegation that in order to find long-term and sustainable solutions to crises such as these, it is essential to address their root causes. We note that the current complexities in the fragile region of Eastern Europe have been exacerbated by the provocative actions and decisions of certain states, as well as NATO, which have led to a geopolitical divide in that region. Regrettably, the Islamic Republic of Iran has been facing baseless allegations from some parties to this conflict that my delegation repeatedly has denied and continues to reject it categorically. After considering the motivation of some of the member states sponsoring today's resolutions, we have come to the conclusion that this is another political move in a wider geopolitical rivalry. I want to reiterate that the references made to the purposes and principles of the United Nations in resolutions just adopted few minutes ago must in no way be regarded as reinterpretation of the United Nations Charter. For all of those reasons, my delegation abstained in the warning on these resolutions. Finally, it should be mentioned that the Islamic Republic of Iran will continue its constructive engagement to help the peaceful resolution of this crisis. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Islamic Republic of Iran. We have heard the last speaker in the explanation of vote after the vote. As agreed earlier, the Assembly will resume the debate on Agenda Item 5. I now give the floor to His Excellency Jim O'Callaghan, Minister of Justice, Affairs, and Migration of Ireland.
Mister President, excellencies, colleagues, today we gather in this hall on a very somber occasion. We are here to mark three years.
The brutality of Russia's actions has caused immense suffering and loss for the people of Ukraine. It has disrupted the global supply of food, grain, energy, and other vital commodities. It has undermined the foundations of the international rules-based system on which the United Nations is based. The principle that borders cannot be changed by force protects us all, and yet, a permanent member of the Security Council has cast this vital principle aside. This should concern us all. It must surely not be rewarded. The cause of Ukraine is not a case of north and south or east and west. It is the cause of right versus wrong. These are universal values that apply to each of us equally and in full. Any credible future for multilateralism depends on this. Let us recall, Mr. President, that on seven occasions, this General Assembly has called for an immediate, complete, and unconditional withdrawal of Russian military forces from the territory of Ukraine. We have done so in overwhelming numbers. Today, Mr. President, we gather once again to call for an end to this war and a just and lasting peace in full accordance with the U.N. Charter. Mr. President, we all want this conflict to end. The distinguished minister from Ukraine has been eloquent in describing her country's desire to see an end to three years of war. The cause of peace must be our overriding objective and our guiding star. We welcome and commend efforts to bring about an end to conflict. We thank the United States for its commitment to advance peace for Ukraine. Many of us in this chamber have known conflict in our past. For some, the present is marred by conflict and its terrible effects. We in Ireland know the value of peace and why we must work to achieve and to preserve it. But we must also acknowledge that how we make peace matters. We must aspire to a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace. A peace that respects Ukraine's sovereignty, territorial integrity, and the principles of the United Nations Charter and international law. Ukraine must be central to any process and must determine the timing and terms of any agreement. We know that an end without justice is not peace. The people of Ukraine have endured over 1,000 days of attacks on land, by sea, and from the air, on their homes, their hospitals, their schools, and their critical energy infrastructure. Russia has forcibly deported thousands of Ukrainian children, forced over 14 million from their homes, and deepened the scourge of global hunger. The decisions of our shared institutions of international justice reinforce the collective condemnation that we, as United Nations member states, have made of Russia's reprehensible aggression against Ukraine. These decisions must guide us as we seek to craft a peace in line with the United Nations Charter and international law. And so we meet today, Mr. President, not for any partisan geopolitical agenda, but because the Russian Federation has failed to implement all seven resolutions of the General Assembly, and it has ignored the orders of the International Court of Justice. Accountability for Russians' violations must remain a priority. Mr. President, in the face of brutal adversity, the people of Ukraine continue to demonstrate outstanding courage, resolve, and determination. Today, Ireland would like to honor their heroic efforts to defend their country and their freedom. They have done nothing to bring down this war on their heads. They deserve the same right we all claim of self-determination, to determine their own future in peace, dignity, and security. They deserve the unqualified support of each of us in this chamber. We are all agreed that the time for a just, lasting, and comprehensive peace in Ukraine is long overdue. Let us act now to advance this noble goal. In doing so, let us recall that if the U.N. Charter and accountability are not central to our endeavors, each of us is less secure. We know this from history, and we know that any common framework to deliver a just and lasting peace must uphold the United Nations Charter. I urge all states to join with Ireland in recommitting to these fundamental purposes and principles. Purposes and principles that are for the peace and security of all of us, of these United Nations. Thank you very much.
I thank His Excellency Minister for Justice, Affairs, and Migration of Ireland. I now give the floor to His Excellency Georgios Jerapetritis, Minister of Foreign Affairs of Greece.
Thank you, Mr. President, for convening today's meeting of the General Assembly. President, excellencies, colleagues, our meeting here today marks the third anniversary of the Russian invasion of Ukraine. Greece's foreign policy has been invariably defined by its commitment to international law, to the U.N. Charter, and the respect of international treaties that define borders between states. Therefore, we condemn in the strongest terms any breach of international peace and security affected through military action by any state against the independence, sovereignty, territorial integrity of any other state. Based on those principles, on the issue of Ukraine, Greece's stance has been very clear from the 24th of February 2022. We have consistently supported all previous calls to put an end to the war in Ukraine, welcomed thousands of refugees from the war-torn country, and worked together with other nations to promote relevant U.N. General Assembly resolutions. Once again, we call for the cessation of hostilities and a peaceful resolution. This war has already caused immense destruction and suffering. We need peace. Perhaps peace might not be within grasp, but it might be within sight. But what is needed is not only a cessation of hostilities, but mostly a comprehensive and lasting settlement through inclusive diplomacy based on the U.N. Charter and international law. We also need an agreement that will guarantee and act in a deterring and preventive way in the years to come. The war must stop. We all agree on this, and we commend all efforts to this effect. Yet, it is incumbent that fundamental principles of international law and strength in the U.N. Charter are explicitly stated. It is in this vein that our vote was directed earlier today. We need to draw the right lessons and endow any future peace settlement with credible security guarantees for Ukraine that will deter and prevent the recurrence of war in the future. Ukraine is not a regional issue and should not be treated as one. It has a direct impact on global security and peace. It concerns us all in this assembly. Ukraine, Europe, indeed the world, need a fair, viable, and thus lasting peace for Ukraine. Let us support this goal after three disastrous years of war, while at the same time hoping that this could also lead to a model of how to prevent similar calamities in the future. Thank you.
I thank His Excellency Minister for Foreign Affairs of Greece. I now give the floor to His Excellency Radolau Sikorski, Minister of Foreign Affairs of Poland.
Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, I had many ideas for today's speech, but one by one I discarded them. Is why? We live in turbulent times. After a short break from history that some of us enjoyed, it has again caught up with us all. In times like these, when the world seems out of joint, when the old seems to be dying, but the new cannot yet be born, what we need is a return to basics, to questions about what's right and what's wrong, what's true and what's false, what's actually happened and what's just a figment of propaganda. Almost exactly three years ago, on March 2, 2022, nations of the world gathered here in a special session faced with a straight question: whether to condemn, applaud, or ignore Russia's invasion of Ukraine. Their answer was clear. The measure condemning Vladimir Putin's actions was adopted by a vote of 141 in favor, with 35 abstentions and unequivocal reaffirmation of our commitment to Ukraine's sovereignty, independence, unity, and territorial integrity. Only five countries voted against, among them Russia, Belarus, North Korea, and representatives of the now-deposed Syrian regime. Quite a company. According to Kremlin's propaganda, what started three years ago was a justified reaction to Western imperialism allegedly threatening Russia's security. In fact, we have seen a modern-day colonial war against Ukrainian people who want a better life and realize they can never achieve this goal by going back to their subjugation to Russia. That is what they are being punished for, an effort to free themselves from under the control of a former metropolis. Many countries represented here know the experience. Kremlin aggression is a manifestation of a failing empire's desperate struggle to restore its sphere of influence. We all knew it back then. Fast forward three years, and the same group is no longer so sure. What happened? Basic facts have not changed. Russia invaded a sovereign nation, violating its rights to existence and self-determination. During the course of war, Russian forces have killed thousands of people. They have indiscriminately bombed both military and civilian infrastructure, apartments, hospitals, schools, kindergartens. You've seen it all. War crimes have been committed. Thousands of Ukrainian children have been kidnapped and sent to Russia to strip them of their national identity. Vladimir Putin does not only want to destroy Ukraine's presence, he wants to steal its future too. We all knew it back then. We still actually know it. Opinions in this body began to shift not because facts have changed. They are changing because of self-interests. Some of our member states now seem to believe that ending the war at any cost and restoring business as usual with Russia will be beneficial. As a representative of the country neighboring both Russia and Ukraine, I can tell you, it will not. By normally normalizing relations with Moscow, you would be entrusting your security and economic stability to an autocrat and a war criminal in an international environment much more unstable than it was a decade ago. Russian victory, may it never come, would not create a more just global order. It wouldn't benefit countries dissatisfied with where things stand now. It wouldn't even bring about a more just and prosperous Russia. Suffice to say, there are now more political prisoners in Russia than there were in the 1980s when the Soviet Union invaded Afghanistan. There are many more casualties as well. Repercussions of an appeasement would also not be limited to Russia's immediate neighborhood. Kremlin's Green Men, well-known from Donbass, are already present in African, Latin American, and Asian countries operating under different names. Let Putin win in Ukraine, and their activities will only intensify. Moscow's disruptive actions in Africa echo its actions in Europe, undermining stability, supporting illiberal regimes, discrediting the West. Thousands of mercenaries from the so-called Wagner Group, now charmingly renamed Afrika Corps, are employed by local warlords and rewarded with access to precious metals and mineral mines, stripping Africa yet again of its wealth. If Ukraine is abandoned today, who will be next? Another country in Eastern Europe? Possibly, but possibly a country in the Middle East or an African state targeted to serve as a Russian military base replacing Syria, where a regime propped by the Kremlin recently collapsed. Ladies and gentlemen, we've just heard another performance by the Russian ambassador consisting of lies, propaganda, and hypocrisy. He referred to Ukraine as a project. Ukraine is not a project. Ukraine is a country with a longer history than Russia. Ukraine is a member of this body for far longer than the Russian Federation. Ukraine has a history, language, and identity and aspirations all of its own, with borders confirmed several times in treaties by the Russian Federation. The mission of this body, from its foundation, has been to decolonize, not to recolonize. International community cannot appease aggression because violence reproduces by indifference. Basic facts that prompted our strong unified reaction three years ago have remained unchanged. And when the facts don't change, we should stick to our guns. Poland, of course, supports peace, but peace that is stable and with justice for the victim of aggression. Thank you very much.
I thank His Excellency Minister for Foreign Affairs of Poland. I give the floor to Her Excellency Biba Braise, Minister for Foreign Affairs of Latvia.
Three years ago, Russia unleashed a full-scale aggression against its sovereign neighbor, Ukraine. Three years ago, Russia, a permanent member of the U.N. Security Council, blocked that council from taking action mandated by the U.N. Charter to uphold international peace and security. Three years ago, the International Court of Justice ordered Russia to stop its military activities in Ukraine. That did not happen. So, three years later today, Russia, a 140-million-nuclear-armed state, has failed to take even a fifth of Ukraine's territory. It has failed to break 40 million Ukrainians' will to be free and sovereign. But Russia will have lost a million killed and wounded this year while attacking an innocent neighbor. There is no shred of doubt that Russia is the unprovoked aggressor in this war. And let me be unmistakably clear: we all want peace. Ukraine above all wants peace. The only one opposed to peace resides in the Kremlin. The only one opposed to peace resides in the Kremlin. It's Russia who continues to bomb Ukrainian cities and kill civilians every day while pretending to engage in peace process. Latvia welcomes all efforts to bring a comprehensive, just and lasting peace for Ukraine: a peace that is rooted in the UN Charter and international law, just as the Assembly voted today; a peace that guarantees Ukraine's sovereignty, territorial integrity and freedom to choose its own future, just as all our countries want; a peace that ensures that Russia is unable to resume its brutal aggression. In principle, peace is easy to achieve. Russia needs to stop fighting. That is the end of the war. But if Ukraine stops fighting, that's the end of Ukraine. Ukraine has exercised its right to self-defense, clearly covered in Article 51 of the UN Charter. Therefore, countries providing support to Ukraine are not parties to the war. Mr. President, the Kremlin has a new favorite talking point about the root causes of the war and that they need to be addressed. Very well, let's talk about those root causes. Contrary to the Kremlin's twisted fantasies, this war is not about NATO or Ukrainians' wish to join NATO, nor it's the reason for the war. Ukraine's NATO membership was not debated either in 2014, when Russia invaded for the first time, or in 2022, when a full-scale aggression started. So this war is not about Ukraine. It's not about fascism in Ukraine or protecting the rights of Russian speakers. No international human rights organization has recorded anything of that sort and that's why we have international organizations. The Kremlin's blatant lies have been debunked every single day that Ukraine continues to stand strong and resilient as a democracy. So the root causes of the war are Russia's imperial colonial ambitions. Russia seeks to restore its imperial sphere of influence and change the international order. Russia seeks to control the future, choices and resources of sovereign countries and peoples, not just in Europe but in Africa and other continents. Therefore, ladies and gentlemen, addressing the root causes of war requires stopping Russia's imperial conquest once and for all. Therefore, we call on all countries, the parliaments and governments, to significantly increase their aid to Ukraine: political, economic, military, financial, humanitarian, any assistance to Ukraine. The stronger Ukraine is, the stronger its position at the diplomatic table. Mr. President, this is not an isolated war, nor it's just a European issue. Its consequences are felt across the globe, affecting the food security, energy security, resources at some of the world's most vulnerable regions. According to several estimates, Russia's war against Ukraine has cost around 2% of the global GDP. 2% of the global GDP. Impunity for aggression in one place creates a domino effect, emboldening efforts to undermine international order elsewhere. So Russia must face international accountability for the crime of aggression. But we will continue to stand with Ukraine in its existential fight, just as we did today, showing that rights matter, that UN matters, that General Assembly and the will of independent countries matter. I thank you. Slava Ukrainy.
I thank Her Excellency Minister for Foreign Affairs of Latvia. I give now the floor to Her Excellency Gabija Gikbija Džijža, Vice Minister for Foreign Affairs of Lithuania.
Mr. President, Excellencies, colleagues. We stand at the threshold of the fourth year of Russia's full-scale aggression on sovereign Ukraine: an enduring tragedy that has become Europe's darkest war since the horrors of World War II. This aggression is a blatant attack on the very foundations of a rule-based international order. It is an attack on our shared values and at the same time it is test to our collective resolve and common understanding of its fundamental moment shaping the future of global peace and security. Three years later, Ukraine continues to resist heroically. Putin's attempt to military conquest Ukraine has failed. Ukraine has shown the world what true courage and resilience looks like and its unwavering commitment to defending its sovereignty, independence and freedom still continues to inspire us all. Today my message is clear: we cannot give up and must continue to stand for Ukraine. We must continue to support Ukraine as its struggle is inseparable from our shared commitments to peace, security and the defense of the values enshrined in the UN Charter. UN General Assembly has played crucial role in defending these fundamental values together with upholding credibility of international law by condemning this crystal-clear act of aggression. And UN General Assembly has defended international law today again. The resolution advancing a comprehensive, just and lasting peace in Ukraine is a decisive step. Lithuania strongly believes that it is in the interest of all member states to support this resolution. It is not only support for Ukraine, it is about defending the principles that guarantee security for all nations. And Lithuania reiterates that any peace proposal or resolution must include strong reference to the fundamental principles of the UN Charter, particularly the sovereignty and territorial integrity of all states. And we strongly supported amendments that were introduced by France to the resolution tabled by the US. Colleagues, the pursuit of peace requires constant commitment to international norms and international justice mechanisms by first respecting the mandates and then by not undermining the role that they have been entrusted. And we must remain fully committed to also creating new justice mechanisms if existing ones cannot deliver far-reaching justice for Ukraine being the victim of brutal aggression of Russia. Furthermore, accountability for the crime of aggression against Ukraine must not be an afterthought. It must be a fundamental pillar of our legal response to Russia's aggression because it is not only about having just ending for the war in Ukraine, it is about stopping aggression in Europe, making it far more likely that aggression against Ukraine is Russia's last unprovoked war, not merely the latest one. An unjust deal on the tribunal would only reward and embolden Russia not to stop. Furthermore, impunity of military and political leadership for the crime of aggression will empower rogue actors to challenge borders, sovereignty and attack international rules with force. Therefore, we all must be concerned about justice for Ukraine as it affects every nation, every economy and every society. This is why Lithuania is advocating for the strong and effective Special Tribunal for the Crime of Aggression Against Ukraine. Such a tribunal must have real power to deliver real justice, not create another loophole for impunity of those having the greatest power. Justice must also extend to Russia's accomplices, including Belarus. Lukashenko regime must be held accountable and not only for the crime of aggression against Ukraine but also for widespread and systematic human rights violations against its own people. That is why last year Lithuania has referred situation in Belarus to the International Criminal Court concerning alleged crimes against humanity including forceful deportation. We must also continue to support UN investigations, including the work of special rapporteurs in identifying war crimes and delivering justice. These mechanisms are under increasing pressure and face threats to the funding, so we must defend them. Strengthening international justice is the only effective way to prevent future atrocities. Justice takes time but it must be felt by every victim of aggression against Ukraine. And the establishment of the register of damage for Ukraine represents a significant international effort and an essential first step towards creating a mechanism to deliver justice and compensation for Ukraine and its people. Visibility of justice and its real impact are important as well as our all-humanitarian efforts towards alleviating suffering of Ukrainians on the ground. We commend the UN for their efforts in supporting Ukraine with humanitarian aid. The UN's role in humanitarian aid and reconstruction remains essential. The devastating impact of the aggression against Ukraine requires ongoing and sustained global efforts. We urge all member states to stay committed. Ukraine's recovery is not just about rebuilding, it is about reaffirming peace, stability and respect for international law. Colleagues, our support for Ukraine must remain unwavering. We continue to be guided by the same principle: nothing about Ukraine without Ukraine. And so-called peace that forces Ukraine to submit to Russian terms does not guarantee peace. Ukraine must enter any negotiations from a position of strength and justice because just and lasting peace is only possible if Ukraine is empowered and Russia's ability to wage aggression is crippled. Because weak response today incites aggression tomorrow. Justice, strength and unity are the only answers to tyranny and lawlessness. But our actions must match our words. Talking about what we cannot do weakens our position. We must focus on what we can do instead. Ukraine must be free to choose its alliances, security arrangements and finally its future. Ending the war is possible but true peace can never be dictated by the aggressor. The path forward lies in the defeat of Russia in Ukraine and Ukraine's victory by restoring its territorial integrity and independence. Just and lasting peace is possible but only if Ukraine is strengthened and Russia's war machine is dismantled to prevent future aggression. So the choice is clear: future shaped by Ukraine's victory as being strategic victory for all of us or a world where aggression runs unchecked. So let us make wise choices on which the fate of nations depend today and tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank Her Excellency Vice Minister for Foreign Affairs of Lithuania. And I'll give the floor to His Excellency Tryan Rystea, Deputy Minister for Foreign Affairs of Romania.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. President, Your Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, the root cause of today's war in Ukraine is the illegal annexation of the Crimean Peninsula in 2014, followed by the full-scale invasion of Ukraine in 2022 February, exactly three years ago. Russian Federation needs to unconditionally withdraw all its troops from the internationally recognized territory of Ukraine. This should be the silver line for any negotiation effort meant to achieve a comprehensive, just and lasting peace in Ukraine. The United Nations General Assembly stood by Ukraine in the past three years in defense of its sovereignty, independence, unity and territorial integrity because these are in line with the purposes and principles of the United Nations Charter. These defense lines that the General Assembly has taken is consistent with its work in the last 80 years since the Charter was negotiated, thus keeping alive the spirit of the San Francisco Conference. As a country neighboring Ukraine, Romania has witnessed in the last three years the multidimensional consequences of the war launched by Russia. Being a frontline state benefiting from European solidarity, the government of Romania has employed to the best of its ability a wide range of measures in order to mitigate the consequences for the rest of the region and, if possible, worldwide. In line with the Human Rights Law, we welcome the civilians seeking shelter and currently take care of almost a quarter of a million Ukrainians that were granted temporary protection in Romania. We focused our attention to the needs of women and children by employing programs and extending cooperation with most of the United Nations agencies that were on the ground. In line with the international humanitarian law, we have facilitated the export of over 70 million tons of goods, of which 55 million tons of grains, to ensure the continuity of the global supply chain. The focus of our actions has been on ensuring transit of agricultural products so as to mitigate the risk of food insecurity worldwide. The European Solidarity Plan is meant using Romanian roads, railways, river and black sea ports to ensure food products can be available for the global market. Even after peace will be achieved, we will continue to lend support to the overarching goal of food insecurity by putting in use the existing infrastructure. In line with the international law, we sought to establish a tribunal for holding accountable those responsible of all crimes against and in Ukraine, including the crime of aggression. Ukraine is entitled to the strongest reply in terms of judicial accountability and Romania is part of the efforts to establish the best possible international tribunal in this regard. It must serve as an example of compliance with the United Nations Charter as a discouragement of any such future action from any state. Mr. President, Romania will continue to support Ukraine during the process and after reaching out a comprehensive, just and lasting peace because we are determined to live up to our commitments to respect the United Nations Charter and international law. This is not a peace for Ukraine but it is a peace for the whole world. Any conversation on the future of Ukraine and of the neighboring region needs to factor in Ukraine and European countries, particularly those that were affected by the invasion. We cannot allow eight years after the creation of the United Nations Charter for the clock to be set back in time, for the borders to be retraced by force and for unprovoked wars to start against sovereign states. The principles and values that bind the effective multilateralism with the United Nations at its core cannot be bluntly ignorued. Mr. President, the support of international community is necessary for Ukraine because it is for legitimate reasons and it should be the same in any situation when the purpose and principles of the United Nations Charter are bluntly violated. For these reasons, Romania decided to cosponsor the Ukrainian resolution adopted today. And I thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank His Excellency Deputy Minister for Foreign Affairs of Romania. We have heard the last speaker in the debate on item for this meeting. We shall hear the remaining speakers at 3:00 PM today, Monday, 24 February, in this hall. The meeting is adjourned.